I will call as soon as the order everybody stand for please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ronnie, praise your chair.
Here.
Travis King, board member.
Here.
Jason Florence, board member.
Here.
Mary Fleming, board member.
Here.
Bill King, board member.
Here.
Town attorney, Lindsay Lander.
Here.
Town clerk, Conradine, here.
Item number one, addition, deletions, changes, and approval of agenda. Now, this is the planning and zoning meeting.
We're going to move number three to number one.
Want to change your name?
Yes.
With all favor of approving agenda moving three to one, say aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye. All right, item number two, approval of minutes, approval of minutes from December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth.
Second.
Got a second, all favor of approved minutes from December eighteenth, say aye. I will vote aye. Item number three, if y'all had time to look over, this is immediate, our approval of meeting. Basically, after our last meeting, guys, we had kind of an out of control meeting. And this is actually going to be kind of putting in place some principles for us to kind of follow by, for the crowd, for the public to follow by. And basically, I think everybody, if not, we'll have a staff at the door for every meeting, so everybody gets used to it. If not, if not, the gentleman at the back door, the green outfit back there, in uniform, he can escort him out. All that hollering and screaming that we were doing in last meeting, that was very uncontrollable. So, I think it's very, and we've been talking about meeting minutes in the past, which has never proven in order to provide a problem with.
I make a motion to approve the meeting decorum.
Second. No more discussion. All in favor of approving the meeting decorum, say aye.
Aye.
Good on both say aye. All right, at this time, guys, we're going to open up item number four, public participation. Scott, do you want to go up or you want to go up? Keep it to the items.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so on this, on this, guys, we have another comment box at the bottom, so the item number six, citizens' comments. On the public participation, please keep it to the items that we're talking about, okay? So, at this time, I will go ahead and open up public participation for agenda items only.
And they have to fill out a comment card, and you have to come to the podium, state your name, and status.
And I have one, Mr. George Thomas.
Yes.
You could step to the podium, sir, please. Good evening, everyone, George Thomas, interest as well, or just my name?
Uh, your name, if you don't know. Yeah. My name is George Thomas. Uh, so I actually have two. The first one I wanted to go over was for specifically for the collective. So, seeing the interaction, that's kind of what happened last time, in reading the conditional site plan. I actually don't think there's a whole lot in contention. I think there's a pretty, what I find to be a mutually beneficial and pretty simple way forward. So, that's what I'm here to propose, and if you've read it, or if you want to read it, it's written there as well. Uh, but looking at the conditional site plan, it seems like there's really only three things that are kind of, what I would consider to be in contention as far as getting them in compliance. The main one is their compliance with ordinance, uh, and this is two. This is for their conditional site plan, item number two, which is ordinance twenty twenty-one, two-two-one, which I think is the land code, the, I'm not sure what kind of the land code. And it treats the collective as if they were a mobile food vendor. Uh, because there were some other restrictions that will, based on this, apply to them, that I'm proposing shouldn't apply to them because they are not a mobile food vendor, like plants usually within five hundred feet of a residence. I think I should apply to food trucks, because that's the way it's written, but it shouldn't apply to them, is what I'm saying, because they're not, they're not a food truck. But reading it, it seems like that's how it's kind of being applied. So, I think just making that distinction will take away some of the things that I think are kind of like inhibiting their, their compliance. So, that's, so that's a proposal that I make. Uh, one, two is the eighth condition, which is that all special events shall require a temporary use permit from the town. And a special event is defined as anything that isn't, anything aside from them just having a food truck there. So, like if they do a karaoke night, or if they do whatever, like the Thanksgiving thing they did, that would require a temporary use permit. So, what I'm saying is, as long as they're generally in compliance, as a commercial business, they should be able to, I don't think they should have to request a temporary use permit for any event that they're doing. I think it should be limited, if there's a concern, as far as like the residents around them, or the neighbors, that can put a limit on it, I would say at least a few a week. So, maybe like ten a month, max, if that's something, I think they said they're ten a month. Is that all right with you guys, like? So, anyway, so that's, that's my second proposal, is for the temporary use permits, that it, that it not be required up to at least ten events per month, or going beyond ten events per month. And again, that, this is as long as they're in compliance with everything else, like the noise regulations, like the light stuff, not, not that they don't have to comply with, but that as long as they're within the rules, I don't think there should be additional rules, limiting, like limiting how many events they can do, which, which is currently how it's written. That's the second one. Okay, so the first one is mobile food vendors, which, they're not a mobile food vendor. Second one is there are special events which currently require temporary use permits. Uh, and then there's one, too, like for the buffer, like the opaque buffering, that they have to put up, and I think Connie said that y'all were working on like where specifically it was going to have to go up, like so it didn't block the view from the street, because there was like some safety concerns. That one I request be removed, just because I don't know like what the actual practical benefit of that would be, really. You know, I don't know how much benefit, like any of the neighbors or anyone else would get out of that. So, I request that be removed. I think that requirement came from, uh, like I think for a, any commercially zoned property, if it's adjacent to resident, the residence, has to have that, I believe, is where that, that requirement come from. But again, I'm not sure what benefit any of their neighbors would really get by having that, especially.
Just trying to speed it up, you're, you're at your three minutes now, okay?
Okay, okay, I just need like one more minute, that should be done. Yeah, so those are the three things that I recommend that y'all consider. I think if those concessions are made, I think they'll be in compliance. There's nothing else that I'm worried about that, that they're not complying with. And also, as far, they care about like not annoying their neighbors, I don't know when they talk to the neighbors. So, I, I understand that like they, you know, you can't have a business just pissing off all their surrounding neighbors, but I don't think that, I think that's certainly not the case for them. And then also, very quickly, the other comment card.
No, it's the next one. No, that's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one, okay, okay, sorry. So, that's it.
That's all we have for the comments. All right, um, we'll move, we'll close public participation at this time. We'll move to item number five, which we moved three up. So, consideration of site plan, SP twenty-three dash oh-two submitted by Margaret Green.
Yes. This is a site plan approval to renovate the home across the street for a restaurant. There has been a site plan submitted, and there are ten conditions in your packet for the site plan. Known as Exhibit A, attached to the final development order. Access to the site shall be limited to the location as shown on the site plan. Any expansion of off-street parking is subject to be granted a permit from the town of Fort Wedge. Off-street parking, as shown on the site, may be, the plan may use crushed rock, but shall maintain the required ten-by-twenty-foot dimensions with wheel stops. The parking aisle shall be a minimum of twenty-four feet in width. Handicap parking shall be as required by state law, and dimensioned not less than twelve-by-twenty feet. Handicap spaces shall be at the closest point of access to the restaurant. In addition, at least one motorcycle space shall be provided for every ten parking spaces. That's number one. Number two, the number of seats permitted in the restaurant shall be limited to the required ratio of seats per space as provided within section six point oh-three, point oh-two, point one of the Townsland Development Code. All off-street parking shall be landscaped as provided within section six point oh-four of the Townsland Development Code. On-street parking shall be prohibited unless permitted by town regulations. Commercial dumpsters shall be required for all solid waste collection and removal. The owner shall contact waste program to establish the appropriate location for the dumpster, and the dumpster shall be located on a concrete pad and be completely surrounded by a six-foot opaque fence. The site will be maintained in a manner to keep the site free of debris, the grass note not exceed three inches in height, and in good condition. The restaurant shall be required to purchase a town occupational license. This license is to ensure that all appropriate licenses have been obtained for the operation of a restaurant. All lighting shall be provided, directed to the interior of the site in a manner that does not allow light pollution to infringe on adjacent properties. All signage shall require a separate sign permit to be issued by the town, and site shall be connected to town water supply and town sewer system when available. And in your packet is a structural report from an engineering firm, saying that it is structurally sound. The site plan in your fi, in your packet shows all the items that are required in the development order. This is in downtown development district, which does allow zoning for a restaurant. The approval of the final order will be approved condition upon the terms set forth in the Exhibit A that I just read. Yeah, there's no seating.
All right. We're going to stay in then.
Can't do that.
No seating.
Occupancy is thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Is everyone part of the county here, or what? Because I live in city limits.
All I'm saying is occupancy is thirty-three per fire department.
I can give my seat for one of y'all, because I don't think I have anything for the other.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's going to be crushed rock, crushed rock.
Is this any?
With wheel stops.
This, this with the counties guidelines of parking?
The counties?
Yeah. I know it's the county, but the county doesn't, is this being overlooked?
Yeah, the county will oversee the construction, yes. Yeah, it has to be redone. It has to be upgraded to allow for a restaurant, because that was a residential house. So, it has to be redesigned for a commercial. Yes, yes.
Everything I read on here was, it's not until by engineers.
Yes. And then permitting, permitting will be done by the county. Permitting inspections will be done by the county, and it will have to be the Florida Building Code for commercial. The fire marshal has inspected and determined the max number of seats and all that sort of things.
I'd like to make a motion to, so are we approving the site plan?
Mm-hmm.
Two. I guess we'll bring it.
Be a recommendation.
Recommendation to approve to the town council.
Is it a motion to recommend the town council? Make a motion to approve the site plan for SP two-three dash zero-two. Recommend. Recommend approval.
All in favor of a recommendation of site plan, SP twenty-three dash oh-two, to the town council, say aye. I will vote aye. All right, I will go back to. One more thought.
They'll be number, one will become two, and two will become three. Number two is the consideration of special use permit, number two-three-oh-one, which was tabled from the December eighteenth for the collective. The special use permit is to allow commercial business to operate within one hundred feet of a residential area. The special, just so you know, the special use permit is contingent upon the site plan being approved, and the site plan is contingent upon the special use permit being approved. So, they go hand in hand.
Any discussion on this, guys? The site plan. We, guys, we have been, we can, have Mr. Rubin in a second to affect the podium, but we've had some, I don't know if everybody's aware, but we've had some, this week, we've had some phone calls. We had to call in, health department, health department came down, we'd cited the collective. Couple incidents, I believe they had time enough to correct them, I believe they came back, I believe they get the health department here a couple times, twice, come back in the same time and sit there correcting the situation. The DB, then Mr. Rubin spoke this morning, did the DBPR, they, they came in. Did they give you clearance on your trucks?
Yes.
They inspected the original complaint?
Yeah.
So, what about the trucks?
Yeah, they inspected the truck as well.
Did they give you a clearance or inspection report? Not yet. But we, we spoke this morning, and they supposed to correct the issue that was going on down there. I think they haven't, you know, one of the trucks was there, I believe they had a disgruntled, they say he was upset, I guess they, I don't know what happened, but whoever was running the other truck, and he got mad. Anyway, called, you know, called, made some accusations, so I went down and took some pictures. From there, led to the health department, like city, they got, and they responded very fast with the call. Come back to the pictures, what was going on. And now we're here, and I don't know, you know, we, I keep hearing a lot of talk of wanting us to alter our resolutions on our food trucks. And we came up with this resolution, what, twenty, we moved up to?
Twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Two thousand twenty-one, okay? So, before all this started with the collective, before the collective even started their business, they had an opportunity to look at our food truck resolution, know what we, we were expecting as a town. Now, we're two, three years later, and now we're talking about music ordinances. And as I told Mr. Rubin today, nothing against his business, but I'm tired of hearing about collecting. Guys, you know how much my phone rings talking about collecting. And we need to either stick to our, stick to what we got as a resolution, that's what they need to follow, and move forward from here. You know, Miss Patch, you did operate for how long now, Miss Patch? Yeah. Do you have a problem with what we got in place? And you own your own property as well. So, my recommendation to the board is they follow the food truck resolution that we've got in order. Now, I'll let, it's not time to talk, sir. So, that's my recommendation. Now, we'll open this up, we'll discuss a little more. But I say leave the food truck resolution along, and let's move forward from here. I mean, we, we put it in order, and I think it's, I mean, it's in general, but we need to add to it. But as I was telling Mr. Landers and Ms. Connie, we need to, we've put a lot of this problems back on the landowners. Well, that didn't work out. Just last week, we had remove a lady from their premises that was selling food that should not have been there. Now, I got your, I got your story, and I'll let you tell it here in a second. But there was a truck that was down there selling, I guess seafood. Supposedly, five people got sick. That's what Connie said that she had heard, right? From, from one of the councilmen, right?
Yes.
We reported that also to them, but there's no records, so nobody applied, nobody put in a report to health, so you can't really go off that. The problem I have is why was that truck there? That truck should have never been on those, those premises. So, as a town, we're going to have to do a better job regulating the food trucks than what we're doing. So, until we update our resolution, when I say update it, put in there what we expect, and I know me and Mr. Rubin had some talk today about what we've, I mean, what I was going to expect, and that's that every food truck that checks in down there, that we got to know about it. And if we don't know about it, it comes a pretty heavy penalty if we find out about it. And that's kind of, that's the only way I know how to govern this food truck.
Right.
Because they'll slide in on the weekends, they'll slide out Monday morning. We wouldn't have heard about the one where the people were supposedly getting sick if we wouldn't have got a phone call, or I think the councilman got a phone call.
Yes.
That alerted everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so then this Connie had to make a trip down there and make the people leave. That's not, that's not our job to run people off people's property. Okay, so, all that being said, somewhere we need to come up with, I guess, direction from the board to give Mr. Landers and Ms. Connie permission to go, I mean, and I've reached out, I guess, I've, I've done some work on this. I called High Springs a week and a half ago, and they sent me over their ordinances and stuff. They said, and the young lady I was talking to told me it took them a while, a bunch of lawyers working on it. And it took them a while to come up even with what they call a food truck rodeo. So, they even have a separate spot for that. It's governed totally differently than just a grid of truck that pulls into town. So, I'm trying to go through, but it's a lot. I mean, you ain't going to digest all this stuff from one day. So, that's, I mean, I guess what I'm asking for by the board is up that. For now, we have a resolution in order, follow the resolution. Until we can update our resolution, move forward and get time to go over this, this information that we received from High Springs. And I'm not saying it's go as far as, let's go to Gainesville, let's call Gainesville. What food truck resolution do they have? Let's go outside the boundaries and figure out how are they, how are they regulating these trucks? But I am pretty particular on, you know, I think we've, a couple times, had to go down there and ask people to leave. It's not our job, but we're not caving for them. But we're having to make it our job, and it's not fair. It's not fair to Miss Patch, it's not fair to the other food truck, when we got people that's not doing it the right way. So, we got, we had, I mean, you had to talk about that day, and you sure meant you wanted to do it the right way. But at this point, I, I mean, I don't know what else to do. And I've been dealing with, I'm starting, I thought about giving them all y'all's phones, and start calling y'all. Because I had dealt with citizen after complaint, after, you know, people called me about, in, in favor of, guys, this, this all started out, y'all, we, we came in, y'all, everybody remembers the last meeting? We wasn't contesting shutting anybody down, but everybody come in here raising candy, that we were trying to shut everybody down, no one. We were trying to come up with a solution. Well, that's led us to this meeting now, which in the process, we had problems that's come up. One, the health department got called, now DBP. It's, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, oh, yeah, go shoot, wait. These were the pictures that I took from the collective, and I went down and I got called. And then we, we called in the health department, called in DBPR. Now, this is runoff of truck. So, this is what.
White water on the neighbor's property.
Yeah. This is the things that, guys, we don't want to happen. And now, I'll let you address this in just a, I mean, I won't, we're not trying to pick on you, but I mean, yeah, we want everybody to see what we're dealing with here. You know, the last meeting, it even got brought up, why don't you just shut them down? You know, and really, that's probably what should have happened when all this first started, and then worked through all this and then reopened. But we were trying to give you leniency, get a business going. We're not, we're not trying to hold anybody back from moving business, but why, we want business, okay? But these are the things that I'm getting called about. I'm having to leave my house and I come take pictures of this, and I'm going, this is actually crazy. So, all this being said, guys, we have a, we have a food truck resolution in order. Let's follow it with direction of updating it, to where it governs, it protects people that's doing it the right way, like hopefully now, the collective, Miss Pat, it protects y'all. It's like any other business, guys, if you got, you know, you got a, Sonny's over here doing it the right way, and you got a Norman Woodie's over here doing it the wrong way, you know, I mean, you got to, both of them's got to be governed the right way. So, that's all I'm saying, as a board, we have to protect the citizen full white. And doing that, we have to make it to a point where, you know, everything is black and white for everybody, okay? And if you're going to, if you're going to allow them to have music, then what are we opening up for that? Well, that's what everybody's not thinking about, okay? Let's say that we said, okay, yeah, play your music, play your music. How many residents are you affecting? Now, when somebody goes and buys a piece of property across the road, they open up one. How are you going to tell them they can't have music if they can't have music? And we're doing what we're doing inside of a residential, it is commercial, but it's still resident. We got residents all around. So, something to think about. So, my motion, I can make a motion, right? Yeah, my motion on the board is to leave.
We can have a discussion before?
Yeah, here we can, we can before I make a motion, yes.
The one thing that I see that we should change, is the hour we're going, if you shut them down at dark, nobody that works can get home and get supper.
There's no outdoor dining after dark. They can stay open from seven a.m. to ten p.m.
Takeout.
Every day. Outdoor dining stops at dark, that's the only thing. And who's going to sit outside and meet when it's forty degrees? So, it's not shutting them down, it's, you know, they're open.
I'm not saying shut them down, I'm just saying it's food truck, you're sure.
Sure, and I agree, but they're, they're there to sell food, sell food, be happy with what's here. There's no reason, because as soon as somebody builds across that side of the road, I'm going to have a problem with it. Because I hear it from my house, and there's a lot of neighbors that don't like it, that are telling y'all they do like it, but they're scared to get ambushed by whomever's ambushing people. And I'm frankly, for one, sick of that, period. This whole divide and all that, it's not cool. You're responsible, you own that business, you should know, and you should let, guarantee us that you're going to make sure they're going to have a business license and a health license to sell food. It's not her responsibility, it's not our responsibility. You should be responsible for anybody if you own that property. I mean, it's common sense, and that's not our line. You know, I think we do need to change some things personally. However, we need to stick with what we have, like Ronnie said, be fair, keep these meetings going in a positive direction. But to be upset that you can't have outdoor dining after dark, but you can still sell food for another four and a half hours? Why are we upset? You know, if you're in business, you're in it to make money, and if you're selling food for a food truck, I don't understand the point.
Mr. Chair, can I address that?
Just a second, just a second, just a second. Well, you had something else.
It was, it was just, I'm just trying to make sure that, are we talking about the collective, or are we talking about the food truck?
We're talking about the whole deal. I mean, as a right hand, that's all we have.
Because other owners, other landowners don't, is not likely correct. They're a little different.
Well, Miss Pat's-
But it's still, I'm not, I'm not taking up or saying for nobody, but I'm saying, who are we talking about right now?
Anything that sells food out of a food truck, a vehicle.
Right now, we're talking about a food truck.
Yes.
What they can do, what they can't do.
Right.
Well, do we want to, here's the thing.
I mean, that's all landowners.
Well, let him know that-
Any landowner that has a food truck on their property ought to make sure they got the right papers.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Anything on, not just the collective, because surely, if anybody takes a food truck on their property, so that's never been done before, boy.
Right.
So, growing as we go.
And that's another thing I wanna add into the, the resolution is where once a year, we, Ms. Connie's doing some research on it right now to figure out how many times the DVPR inspects, how many times the food truck have to be inspected. Y'all might, it's once a year, okay, so once a year, so that needs to be reported to the town for white, so we go, hey, if we get a complaint, we can go, no, there, I've got everybody on something here that's covered. They've dotted on their eyes and crossed on a T, I mean, they're playing here, it's in the paperwork, they got their business license, the DVPR's come out on this date, inspected them, almost 100% satisfied. That's things that needs to go into resolutions, that's what I'm saying, because the motion I was gonna make was to give our, you know, our lawyer and Ms. Connie motion here forward to dig into some more counties to figure out what, how they're governing these food trucks. I do like what you said, leaving it open just to sell food, no outdoor dining, but, now, what, is that just for landowners that own the food trucks, or is that for across the board? Food trucks, period trucks?
I mean-
So, it doesn't matter?
Yes.
Okay?
I mean, that's the way I'm, that's the way it's-
Can I clarify, can I clarify something? We have an ordinance that we have, that applies to food trucks, that we have made a part of this particular special use permit and site plan. The reason being is because they have food trucks down there. The ordinance applies to all food trucks, okay? The special use permit and the temporary use permits and those kinds of things apply to the collective. Because the food trucks are not the ones doing karaoke night, the collective is the ones doing the karaoke night, okay? And they have to get a temporary permit for the items that are not approved as a use under the commercial general zoning category.
Right, so it's two different categories.
Yes, it's two different things. The collective has to apply by the, the commercial general criteria, and the food trucks operating within the collective have to abide by the food truck ordinance.
I get, Mr. Landers, let me ask you a question. How, how do you, how do you, how do you regulate? How do you regulate or control outside of boundary of, say, a truck comes through Fort White and they stage up across from S and S, okay? Very legal, so we go and tell them to leave, okay? They leave, then two weeks from now, we get weird, and they come back. How do, where do, I mean, how do you regulate and start, I guess, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out a way to-
Yeah, without internal inspection, so it's true.
Yeah, I don't know, how do you, how do you regulate, I mean, how do you, where does the penalty fall? Because there, I mean, I guess the people that's on the property?
Well, we don't have employees, I'm sure. Most municipalities don't have employees. A mechanism by which to police and enforce those types of things. The only thing that you can do is what we've done in this, and this colony has gone down, you know, places, and you got, you got nothing. I think this is one of these things that just falls into the gray area of operating municipality. We don't, we don't have police force, right? So, we get, send our police down there to run them all. We don't, we don't have judicial powers that municipalities used to have. We don't have like a city court, which we can't issue on the site, you can't, you don't have the court. So, you have, really have two things, you go down and say, hey, you don't have a business license there, you don't whatever, you have to go off property. And, and the other thing that we have done in this case, that we're currently dealing with, is notify the county slash state folks who regulate the footage.
So, I guess, I guess to hold people accountable, and it protects the guys that's already here and is doing it the right way. And I guess what I'm saying is, if you did it that way, could you, could we come up with an ordinance where it holds the landowners? If we know that that truck was sitting on this person's property, we could send them a note and say, hey, do you understand the regulations that follow the food trucks, and the truck that we felt like was there was not licensed, and we have no license, none of this on them? If we catch that truck back there again, it'd be a fine.
I think you could do that through code.
Right.
I think, I think we just look at what our existing code for the park, we need to make modifications there.
And like I said, and it does nothing, but it also protects these guys that's doing it the right way, and they don't have to worry about competition coming into town, because there, I mean, if I was running a food truck, I'd be like, man, why that guy, that guy's illegal, he's illegal in there.
I think that's the only way that you can do it, in a way that actually have to attach a term.
We might do that, put that in the ordinance, and maybe hold code for it. And that's on trucks, that's on trucks that are coming through, but the same fine would be, that's, we're trying to put in place for, say, whoever.
Right.
It's, it's still to follow the landowners, allow that truck to set up.
That's correct.
Yeah, that, that would be your defense, to be the end. The food truck operator basically just have to make them split out, which is pretty, the landowners will be bad.
Okay, one more question, let Mr. Green brought it up, and I'll, I'll start. If we abide by the resolutions in place right now, and Mr. King, I, I, at board, I, do y'all have a problem with them selling food till, say, 10 o'clock and 9:00, I mean, whatever? No outdoor seating to sell food?
Yeah, that's what the code says.
Is that, is that, did our code say that, they can sell, I thought it said, I thought it said-
Outdoor dining.
No, outdoor dining after dark.
I'm sorry, I thought it was, okay, so that's, okay, so it's, I have a question.
The state regulation with food, I thought we talked about this before, I thought the state regulation with food truck, if they have restaurants on site, that they can have up and down.
They can, they can, legally, I guess.
Was I to supersede the state?
Yeah. I already talked to state about it, so.
We can make those-
Municipalities, you still can have your own governing rules, even though the state says so. Bye. Mr. Rubin, please.
We're gonna get, you guys, you guys take a second.
Say your name.
My name is Rubin, 293 Southwest Bryant, owner of the collective. Regarding the resolutions, I wanted to know if you and Connie were gonna give a more detailed analysis, because you and I have been in conversations where you stated that because we were an independent thing other than our food trucks alone, that we would be granted an exception on specific ordinances. One of them being the fact that the tables were two tables per truck. We hadn't even discussed the outdoor dining before, and you agree that because the collective provides an enclosed fence area, a roof structure, bathrooms and all of that, that it would also be except, as an exemption from having to stop my outdoor dining after this?
Well, if you recall that meeting, I said that I would work on that. Never told you that, I said, but you do understand I'm one man on a, on a, basically a five man board.
So, is that something where you've been continuing to move forward with in working together on that?
From what the motion, well, I haven't made a motion yet, but what the motion is on the board is that we're fixing to follow our resolutions. And that will have to be something that has to be discussed down the road.
So, the collective will not be granted use of the property aside from the food truck's ordinance anymore, as a separate entity? I'm, I'm wondering, originally, this all became a thing because we said that the collective was separate aside from the food trucks. And therefore, we were gonna work on updating some of these ordinances to reflect that when you own your own property, when you own a structure, fencing and all the fact that the commercial business would be granted that exception. So, I'm curious if that's-
We, we told you, and again, we told you in that meeting, that those are things that we could work for. Okay, I never told you that's what we were willing to do, I, I can't, I, there again, I can't make that decision, you got, you got, I just become a voting member, what, a year ago? I didn't even have a right to even vote until about a year ago.
So, there's still being workshop planned then, as originally?
I believe not a disappointed, it's not a march in.
So, we won't be working towards that anymore?
I don't know what we're gonna be working toward. As of right now, we're working toward following our resolution that we got in place and making some, we're gonna reach out to some surrounding counties and figure out kinda what they're doing. I've got one county that's already responded to me from High Springs, but it was pretty in depth, it's gonna take some study to do it on. So, until we can come up with how are they governing all this stuff, how is that getting up, then, I think, you heard what, I mean, the thing is, you can sell food, you can just no outdoor dining after dark, so that's, I mean, that's pretty much what, I mean, that's what our resolution said, right?
The food trucks will operate according to the food truck ordinance. The collective will operate according to the rules for commercial general zoning.
Right.
That's it.
So, you got two sep, two separate identities down there, obviously. So, each one has to abide by, by, the food trucks have to abide by their, their regulation, and then the collective has to abide by their, their regulation. All right. What were you doing to correct, what was up here? Uh, that's already been corrected, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, come on back, I'm sorry, yeah, that's already been corrected.
So, I, so I did apologize, and we were very embarrassed about what happened with Sean, unfortunately, that deal went completely bad. And the property was able for him to do that, and so we went ahead and, within four hours of them being out there, we went ahead and remedied the entire issue. We went ahead and had a tractor out there, we reworked a foot of the soil, we added line as they, as they required. And we even went ahead and already contacted the health department about pulling one of the new nitrogen fixing septic tanks, which are the ones that are used for restaurants. So, we're gonna go ahead and have one of those installed on the property so that we can make sure that this issue never happens again. We were extremely embarrassed about it, and so we took account for it and responsibility, even though it was not our business that was operating the truck that made that back haul. So, we did go ahead and remedy that, you guys, I have an email here from the Department of Health. They even went ahead and got rid of all the fines that they were gonna hit us with because they said that we worked with them so quickly. They went ahead and took away all the fines, they went ahead and basically said this is watering to the bridge and that it's closed. So, we also talked with DVPR about the situation. We went ahead and transferred everything back from that food truck back to our main. We're not gonna rent that out anymore, we're gonna take management of that truck ourselves so that we can make sure that everything is done the right way from here on out.
So, that was your truck?
Yes, I own the food truck and I have it leased with Sean.
I thought that was the, that was the white truck, right?
And I was, I was sitting here, I was fixing to correct that, so, that, you, you keep saying that was Sean that did that. Well, I don't know what Sean did, I don't know what the situation was, we got, and I've, I've had disgruntled employees before myself. But, that water, that's what that pitcher was. When I walked behind the blue truck, there was not a drop of water, okay? That water there was behind the white Mexican truck. And when I went to the pitcher, and the guy that's inside the truck was like, what are you doing? I mean, taking a pitcher, why do you have water behind your truck? Oh, I have a leak. Oh, you do? Obviously. And it wasn't a leak, it was coming out from that tube, is where it was coming, it felt like it had been laid there and been, been that way for a while. That was my fault, if you'd had a leak underneath the truck or something, I would, I mean, yeah, you need to get that fixed. But that's what's laid there, it looked like it'd been laying there for a while and dripping that water, and you seen it in that pitcher where it was flowing out.
Based off the details from-
Enough to make an invention and a-
That's right. So, like I said, and I'm not in that-
It was actually caused by the butters, the health inspector actually made a note of that as well. And they also made a note regarding the water that you saw behind the Mexican truck. It didn't contain any food debris in it. All the food debris and all of that was found by the inspector behind that blue truck. So, the inspector is going along with that.
I took a video of it, right? What truck was it?
If you pull up the video, I would like people to look at the spacing between the fencing, and you can see the blue truck there. I don't wanna go back and forth on what truck it was or wasn't, because, you know, the waste water's down, but it is detailed there, and and I'd like everybody to be assured that I did remedy this situation.
How many times does that happen?
How many times did it happen?
And then that's from now on.
Just that once.
How have y'all been dumping that wastewater?
All the food trucks have a commissary that they go dump at, and then we had also put a container out there, a 295 gallon container. We then found out that we cannot use that container, so we did have it pumped out and removed. But once again, the health department, they, they said the case is closed, and on top of that, the fact that we are even now going to put one of these nitrogen fixing septic, you know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing.
Are you gonna pull out the existing tanks and put in a new tank?
No, the current septic tank that is there for the bathroom has already been permitted for all the seating underneath that barn, plus the bathrooms.
So, where's the new tank gonna go?
The new tank, we're gonna go ahead and talk with the Department of Health, we're thinking it's either gonna go on the west side of the barn or on the east side, because we were told that we can put the septic within five feet of another property home. So, we do have both those options.
Rocky, are those tanks the same size as the normal tank?
And the tank that we have to put in is the smallest scale, it's a 400 gallon. So, we are working, we've completed this whole thing, and we're making sure that this doesn't happen in the future. So, although, you know, it was my tenant that made the mistake, I took responsibility for it, and I faced the issue.
Because you got to.
You have to. It's your property, everything happens on a property.
I, I'm just, I'm, as of right now, it's hard for me to trust.
I need to top my tenant's top line.
Sure, which is, if you're a property, you lease and maintain and control.
Well, guys, listen, since we, and I wasn't even gonna bring this up, but when I went down there, Sean told me, I went down there, he told me to go look behind the white truck. And that's when I found the water. So, it obviously had been going on for a while, and he told me to stay there for longer, and I would see the guy go out to the field, we went to the field next door, and dump water out there. And I, and the guy seen me after I was taking pictures, and that kind of word, and then nothing like that ever happened, so. So, listen, I understand you had a disgruntled employee, I get it, but, you know, I believe the town has worked with you. We've, we've been up front with you from day one, and I will give you some, some hints, that any time you ever go to open up a business, you might wanna check into what you're opening up. We had, we've had these, these food truck resolutions in order since 2021. I believe y'all didn't open up till a year later after this food truck resolution was put in place. So, if this was the type of business you was going after, then this should have been discussed probably before y'all had even decided to do that. Now, we're at this point here, and you're going, why can't we stay open later, why can't we do this? Well, it's in the, it's in the resolution. You know, I mean, no music, you can decide to do this, I mean, it's in our, it's in our resolution, so, anyway, so, but, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I guess we need to table the two applications.
I would like to make a motion that we, we continue to work on the food truck resolution with, you know, get y'all, get the board to go direction, Ms. Connie, to go forward to work on a plan. Because right now, we have something in place, but I don't feel like it's, it's solid enough. I mean, it needs to be more solid. And, and one is, is like I said, if they continue to do business and they, they do it right, then everybody gets on the same playing field, and it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna eventually protect us, what's gonna happen. It'll stop all these people from rolling through town for a weekend, not being licensed, not getting, you know, we can, we can control all that. So, I'd like to make a motion to give y'all direction to go ahead and move forward with working on a, a plan, for, for a plan for food truck resolution.
And these two applications will be tabled until that happens.
Let's vote, let's vote.
I'll say.
We got a second on the table, okay? So, any more discussion on it? So, all in favor of, of giving direction to, Mr. Landers working on the food truck resolution, say aye.
Aye.
So, I'll oppose, say nay. All right, and then, so now, I guess that, that means now we are going to be governed by a resolution at this point.
The current ordinance, yes. The current ordinance, yes.
That's, uh, two, where we at?
We're at Citizen Commons.
Number three. No, we got it.
That was both of them.
Was that both? We did both? Okay, sorry, okay. Alright, so, uh, item number six would be Citizen Commons at this time. If we have any, any- Um, is it back on the same topic? Cause we're going back into another meeting that we're gonna bring this back up, so.
Now, this, this is just for our comment, not related to-
That's right. This, this is more of a, that's right. This is more of a comment, guys, for not relating to any agenda items. We brought the agenda item up at the beginning and now this is planning. Any, any comments or anything besides what's on the agenda? Alright, we will move forward. Number seven, I will adjourn the meeting. All papers say aye. Alright, we will open up the, uh- Here we are. We need to roll call this over?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Fraser?
Uh, hold on a second. We are now starting the town council meeting. Uh, it's, what time is it? It's, uh, ten till, two till seven? Jay, we're checking twenty twenty-four. That way you have a break in the, in the, the boardroom. I agree, I'm sorry.
Mayor Fraser?
Here.
Councilman King?
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Coon?
Here.
Councilman Florence?
Here.
Town clerk, here. Town attorney?
Here.
Item number one, addition, deletion, change, and approval of agenda.
I have one addition. It's very minor. Um, make it number eight. No, yes, eight. The Girl Scout, a Girl Scout troop is asking for a waiver of a business license to sell cookies down at the collection. To waive the seventy-five dollar fee for the business licenses are non-proprietary.
Make the, uh, motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Thank you.
All papers approved, yes, say aye. All votes say nay. Uh, number, number, item number two is, uh, meeting minutes, approval minutes from December eighteen twenty twenty-three. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September eighteen twenty twenty-three. Second. All in favor of approving minutes from December eighteen twenty twenty-three, say aye. All votes say nay. Uh, item number three, approval of meet, uh, meeting, we need the flashlight. It was recommended from the, uh, the, uh- And I'll leave my mic on, but, yeah. Yeah. P and Z meeting did recommend to us, uh, make the recommendation from the board was that be approved to make a motion to approve the meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving, yes, say aye. All votes say nay. Item number four, alright, item number four, public participation. Uh, this would be agenda item, uh, information, so.
You had two. You had two.
Oh, I did have two. I'm sorry. Alright, we got it. George, uh, Thomas, it's Tonya that one up. Go ahead, sir. You own three minutes now, so.
Parkman and Mr. Thomas, uh, so for the contraction of the parcel number zero four zero six three, uh, zero ten. So I am in opposition to that. And specifically why is I think that's the leases land. That's gonna be like the new, I think, potentially development for the subdivision. I don't know enough about the subdivisions to know whether or not I'm for it or against it. However, the reason I'm in opposition to this parcel being contracted is because I think regardless if the people or the council want to go for it or against it, I think it should be decided by the council. And I think what'll happen is if it falls to Columbia County, uh, like it was contracted from the town of Fort White, it falls under Columbia County. It'll be up to Columbia County to decide. But in reality, who will impact will be the residents of Fort White. So whether or not it gets, you know, approved or denied on the merits of it is, you know, for another discussion. I really don't know enough about it. However, I oppose this because I do think it should be the residents of Fort White who decide. Will be the ones who are impacted. I think I've agreed with it.
Alright, uh, seconds, we can run forward.
I'm here on behalf of Lees, or Lees Land LLC and Colin and Megan Jackson, property owners, basically, property. And, uh, Ms. Ford has no, no reason to stay in the town of Fort White. She no longer plans on doing a subdivision to that property. And, uh, if I don't have a subdivision, then we won't be out of town of Fort White. And I think Fort County of Fort White agrees that they don't wanna subdivision there, so Lees don't wanna pursue it anymore. And, uh, also, according to the rules of D and X and property, as long as it's not affecting anybody but the property owners complying for the D and Xation, from what I understand, it pretty much has to be a done deal, so. It's not, and it's not affecting any of the property owners living in town of Fort White, except for Megan, Devlin, and Mr. Miss Jackson.
Alright, that's all, sir. Okay, we will close public participation. We'll move to number, item number five, new business, uh, request made by Leesland LLC for contraction of parcel oh four six three dash oh one oh, down at Fort White Towne. This is the discussion.
You vote, they put it in there for that subdivision, so the division didn't work.
Right.
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. I don't know. I wanted to be clear, you know, from my perspective anyways, whatever happened with this whole subdivision, I was never opposed towards the growth of the town. What I felt, and I don't know if I was misunderstood or not, I just felt like we wanted to do it by our land development code to make a nice subdivision, not having something of a large scale. As I am new to this board, you know, and a member of this community and, you know, love this town, think that, you know, we need to think things through and not rush and make hasty decisions and, you know, work them out. And, you know, a lot of fire got started and I think it got put out with gas and then more gas and finally just imploded. But, uh, you know, I, I hate how it turned out, but, you know, my concern would be, it's like this gentleman said, you know, if it turns around and goes back to the county, there's no control over a subdivision if it gets built that way. And not that we was down. I mean, we were, I mean, sidewalks, streetlights, curbing gutter, you know, that was, I'm not telling you how many houses-
Well, I think the curbing gutter, we got it kinda, got pushed aside.
A lot of things got a variance in it and whatnot, but anyways, it just turned into a mess. And I think for a lot of us, myself is brand new and that was new and a lot to take in. So I think I learned a lot from that to not make hasty decisions. As this, I'm not comfortable in voting anything in or out of this town today. So if you want my answer is, I don't know and I'm not gonna vote aye on anything.
That's right. What's, what's the, um, as Mr. Ford was to say, what's the, the law?
The decision lies with the council. Lies with the council. And there's a process that they can go through to make more of a form of action to, to seek contraction, what's called a contraction. But again, those are those gonna come back to the council.
You think, though, well, I think, I think-
We're gonna give the property back.
I think-
Couldn't make the subdivision work.
Then what is, it gonna be the different thing? I mean-
It's, it's him bringing the property back up the way he wishes. I mean, if I had property that, I'd want it back too, you know?
Would you put it in?
Huh?
Would you put it in?
Would I put it in the city lands? Not if I couldn't build a subdivision that I could afford, okay? He didn't say he couldn't build a subdivision. The subdivision got outpriced with the sidewalks. I mean, that, y'all asked me that.
No, I want you to, I mean, we wanna know what-
I mean, it was in the county. It wasn't like it was the city. He asked, in the city to do the subdivision.
All that property, was it all in the county or in the, was some of it in the city?
A small portion of it, yeah.
No, no, more than half of that.
It was a small portion of it. What was in the city?
I recall how many acres? Forty acres. Forty.
Forty acres.
Prox.
Approximately.
It was a lot for it. It was closer to thirty.
I mean, you know, and, and I, and I will, you know, here's the thing, guys, I'm with you in this feeling of this, is that, you know, we didn't oppose the subdivision. We opposed the way they were trying to do the subdivision. So all we was putting is, is follow our land development code, which is the name that goes for the curbing gutter, which I think we gave a variance on, which we did give a variance on. So all we were really calling for was streetlights and sidewalks. That's it. So I think that's very, uh, well, to me, I, I don't have, I think there was a lot asked to try to upgrade the subdivision. We hadn't even got to the building part of the subdivision yet. And what, cause I think we get to where we get to pick, like this is the type of structural homes that we want to be put in the subdivision, correct? They show us the sizes. We're agreed what they're putting in there. I think they call that the build out or whatever. I mean, I got whatever.
The developed.
Development part of it. So we never made it that far. We never could get past the curbs and go sidewalks and streetlights. And if you recall, that, um, in a meeting in, in Columbia County, somebody stood up and said that they wouldn't be having road problems if it had curbing gutter, because they spent a pile of money. And the, and the commissioners was asking a certain individual, "Why? Are we spending this money on the road, on, on this road, the subdivision?" Well, they come out and they need the curbing gutter. See, I'm not saying I can take you in my subdivision right now and I'll, I'll butt up to that, I'll butt up to that property. And, and my subdivision right now, my subdivision right now, guys, has got roads that is, is, it's gonna have to, they're, they're falling off. The road going. So it's gonna end up being a situation.
Well, it's seven five in here.
It's hot, it's hot. So I will have to be in agreeance with Mr. King in saying that, I think that, and, and my biggest thing is too, if we D and X the property, like I said, whether, you know, we've been told a lot of things during the subdivision, so we don't really know, and Mr. Ford's telling us, if they don't plan on doing a subdivision or not. So then they get to come back into whatever subdivision in Walton County, like Mr. Thomas said, and under their guidelines. So I, I would have to, like I said, I, I don't know. I'm not too keen on that.
Could I speak in agreement, sir?
Yes, sir, yeah. Please.
So the county guidelines, the paved roads is ten acres. We're definitely gonna do a subdivision, ten acre lots.
Well, I believe, Miss Connie, didn't you say that they could, I was talking to somebody and they said that they could still do the subdivision acre, or I forget what it was, but you still could do a subdivision.
With ten acre lots, yeah, but we're not gonna do that.
I heard that you could, you could, I think that Mr. Williams told me that you could still, under a certain something, that you could still bust them lots down to acre or two acre lots, or something.
Mr. Williams.
That was from Mr. Williams. That, what's it called?
Resilience.
Something. I don't know how he told me you could get done, but I said, "Wow." My biggest question was, why did he ever annex it into Fort White's property? And I don't know if it's forty acres.
Let's, let's show them through the whole story. Alright, like I said before, we knew, when we talked about the subdivision, before we annexed property into Fort White, we knew y'all had an ordinance, curbing gutter sidewalks. We sent an email to the, to the Great Bay, North Florida Special Office, sent an email to the town council, to town of Fort White, and said, "We know y'all have this ordinance, but if we're required to do this, we're not gonna pursue this subdivision." We got an email back from the town of Fort White, I can show you the email, that basically says, "Okay, we're gonna change that, uh, land code by an amended text that don't require curb, gutter, and sidewalk." Said, "That's fine." Well, then we got an email back saying, "No, uh, our land developer, Mr. What's his name, older guy, gentleman working y'all." He said, "The tax amendment will take a lot of work. It is easier to do with, with a variance. So we'll just do a variance." So that's the why, that's the reason we pursued the subdivision. We pursued it with the understanding that the town of Fort White would weigh the curb, gutter, sidewalk issues. That was all, that was all decided before we ever made application to annex our property into the town of Fort White. The emails come from Connie and Tina. I can show you the emails.
Well, I, I get that, but-
So all that decision was made before
Right.
we annexed our property into the town of Fort White. So now the town of Fort White has decided, they're not gonna honor that agreement. And I, and that's fine. But if you're not gonna honor that agreement, we would rather our property be not in the town of Fort White.
Well, besides, did it ever, did it ever dawn to anybody besides talking to the town clerk, you should've talked to the board?
Well, you were mayor at that time.
I didn't talk to you about it. I didn't, you know, you were not-
We talked to everybody about it.
You didn't talk to-
Well, look, I'm not gonna get inarguable about it. It's just, I, I got the emails that shows that, and that's exactly what the email said.
Starve, Miss Connie's not a voting body here. She's just, she's a higher body.
Yeah.
So the emails should've come from somebody on the board. It went from the board.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. I'm just asking you now, being we're not honoring the agreements that the email said we were gonna do, I would like all the leases asking, my wife and, uh, Mr. Miss Jackson, is we just remove this property out of town of Fort White so we can go back to our corporate property, just like we want? We can not have them, and we'll leave the property to our kids one day?
That can still run out and go through with being in the city.
And then that egg it never got changed.
So, uh, the forty-
As long as it's owned by, but as long as we use it, I use it.
Can we rezone it? We can rezone it.
I don't want, I, I want, that's what I'm saying. I'm asking to be removed, or Lees is asking me that she wants to just be out of town of Fort White.
You want, you want it out of town of Fort White.
Exactly.
He wants your property up a lot.
Well, we gave the variance. At the time the variance was approved is when it was decided not to include sidewalks.
No, when Mr. Coon made the very approval, he said approve the variance. And y'all determined afterwards that his motion did not include sidewalks and lights.
You got, you got the video?
Is that not correct? I'm just saying, that's-
No, you're wrong because I, I care what, I've watched it on video several times again.
I did too.
And the motion on the table was, "I approve," and he even looked at me during that meeting and said, "Is this included?"
I won't get into it. I forbid to say sidewalks.
But you didn't.
But you're right. So you're sticking to it. It's right words. Get the man his property back. What's the big deal?
You did, you did.
I was making money off of it. Huh? What? You wouldn't be if the subdivision was there.
I, I don't, listen, I don't, I don't have a, we're not trying to hold your property hostage.
Okay, but I'm looking.
Well, you had all the opportunities to build a subdivision and do it the right way. You chose not to do that. You're builder back now.
Get the man his property back.
Right. I'm not here to argue, but you know good as I do. If you don't have affordable property to sell, you can't sell property. You can't sell mobile homes. If every mobile home lot out there selling property for fifteen thousand dollars cheaper than your home, you're not gonna sell your home.
We buy property every day for mobile homes. It's outrageous.
I understand.
Outrageous. I mean, you're telling me that it, it doesn't matter where it's at.
I'm not here to argue. I'm asking y'all to, to annex my property or Lees' property and Mr. Colin Jackson's property back out of town of Fort White. That's all I'm asking you to do. I'm not here to argue with y'all. And I think that's something y'all should do, being y'all didn't honor the agreement we had to start with.
I don't understand what agreement did we not honor.
I'll, I'll, I'll email the emails to you.
Now, are you wanting the whole parcel or just the, the forty-five that was in the town? Is that staying in the town, or are you trying to go?
We're requesting all of it be taken out of town of Fort White.
How, where, how does that, how does that property look again?
It's okay.
Where's the forty-five at?
This red line.
If you go to the, if you go to the.
This is what was added. This is what was in.
Lindsay?
I think the previous, you know, whatever went on with the, with the.
Well, I watched the subdivision, watched the subdivision. This what?
Yeah, I said, still here or there.
Right, sure.
Look to the best interest of the family.
I'd like to, uh, get some clarification from the county, that way it's, uh, there's no subdivision going there, great, but if there is and it's out of the time limits, the county gets that tax money, the town gets the zip. That's more of a concern, and like that gentleman said, it's affected us, the county. You know, it's his property, and I'm sorry, I hate this situation.
Basically, what you're saying is, you want to control what goes on that property?
No, I don't want you to control it.
No, because you're not, you just said.
What, uh, is gonna affect the town? I just want clarification from the county that there's no way you're gonna be able to do that.
Anything that happens in Columbia County.
Let me finish, and I'll tell you what I'm thinking. If you let me finish, what I'm concerned about is the county, which you have very good sway with, is gonna let you somehow get a variance and build half acre lots, and then we're shit out of luck, excuse my French, sorry, I broke the law, over the road. However, if there's no way and it's gonna be ten acre lots, I have no problem at all.
It ain't gonna be no lot.
I, listen, I've heard a lot of stuff in here in the past few months, and I don't like it. And, and, excuse me, but I'm not gonna take anybody's word without seeing it on paper that it's gonna happen. So, if, if that's fine, I mean, I think if you're saying it's not gonna happen, and the county's not gonna grant some sort of rezoning where you can do half acre lots, then I'm fine with it, you know, I just don't want Fort White to die, and then you go around another trap door and build the, the subdivision, and then now we're out of tax base to grow this town in a positive direction. So, if you don't have, if you're fine with it, next month we table it, verify with the county that there's no way, shape, or form that can happen, and if so, then it's your land, I absolutely have no problem.
It's his land regardless.
I understand.
I, I understand that too.
But if y'all decided to put that in the town of Fort White.
It just told you it was, it's not gonna, I mean, it's like holding this pro- ho- a property hostage because you can't have what you want done with it.
Oh, you don't have control of what's done with it.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. What is the big deal?
None at all.
I mean, it's his property, we won't have to bother you, you won't have to.
But the board, if she wants to speak, let her speak.
What I'm saying is, this is getting along, I'm Lisa Ford, I own the property, okay? Everybody clear on that?
Yeah, we are.
Okay. I mean, uh, just, we want the property back, I mean, we're trying to be civil to you guys, but you just, I mean, you're making it hard. Just, I mean, it's, it's not happening, if the subdivision is not happening, I mean, what difference is it for you guys, what we do with the property?
Look, our developer has done pulled out because they said it don't work out financially. So, we're done. Our developer has pulled out because they said that there's no way financially you can develop the property with the stipulations this town put on that property. They say it don't work out financially, they're not doing it, they're done, they're done. They been done. I mean, y'all already got what y'all wanted, y'all, the property's done.
Now, see, you're taking it the wrong way, no.
Well, I'm just saying.
It's in black and white when you got it, whenever you say, it's irrelevant.
Well, all we're, look, all we're done with is, y'all didn't annex the property out of town of Fort White, that's all we're at.
All I'm asking is to table this until next month, to make sure that that ain't gonna happen.
That's y'all's intention, everything is tabled, tabled. Y'all had this agenda for a week, you could, you had a week to get all your information you wanted.
Right.
Why do you, I mean.
Because I didn't have time to call the county, the county disposed Monday. It's Wednesday, have one day. What, I mean, I don't know, I'm not trying to argue, and I damn sure don't wanna, your personal interest, I swear, that's not their intention, but.
Well, that's just it, I mean, that.
It was in black and white, that was.
But Travis, you told me a hundred times, all I'm gonna do is make sure everybody applies by the LDRs in town of Fort White. The very next, variance come up here, y'all approve that variance. For a dollar store, possibly is the one going in down here this year now, with half the parking space attached. So, so there is, well, I'm, yeah, I'm just saying, y'all, you said, I want to make sure everybody, it's nothing personal, I want everybody to apply to the camp, to Fort White's, to town LDRs. That's your words to me, exactly. And the very next variance that comes up here, y'all approve it, five of them. So, that's not your goal, is to make sure everybody applies by the LDRs in town of Fort White. Look, we're, we're just asking y'all to be annexed property, so we, we don't have to worry about this anymore.
Well, you're acting like we have the hostage where you can't do nothing.
How do you think we feel? How do you think we feel?
Problem pretty bad.
Exactly, I get it. And now you're sitting there telling me and my wife that you're not gonna approve it unless you can make sure you have the final say in what's gonna go on that property. That's what you just said.
I don't know what to say.
You're twisting everything with that.
I'm just saying, I don't, if, if you're, you're gonna let them build a subdivision, it's gonna be done the right way. I don't want you to leave this position because you don't like the way you got it.
If we do a subdivision, it'll be done by the LDRs that are on, on the county, the, the town of Fort White, whoever. But I can tell you, our goal right now is not to do a subdivision. We don't have the finances to put a subdivision in to start with, and without a buyer to do it, which we don't have, it never will happen.
Yeah, but there's no, there's just one developer in this world.
There don't get ten acre lots on paved roads, I can tell you that, they want fifty eight, uh, fifty foot lots on paved roads. I mean, and I tell you what, the buyer said, look at it, if, if, if they don't give me quarter acre lots with curved gutter and sidewalks, I'll jump on that tomorrow. But half acre lots with curved gutter sidewalk, money don't work. We can't come out. I told that to y'all, I said that in another time to y'all. It don't, it don't fly. Y'all don't care. So, now all we're asking is, put our property back in the county, we run our cow going, and we'll continue on.
What, what's the difference between the county and the city, being, being?
We just want, we want out of the town of Fort White.
I know, but what, what's the difference? Money wise, taxes, I mean, what?
Yeah, taxes, money wise.
How would it be taxed?
What y'all fixing to do, y'all just tell, say the other day, y'all fixing to do a, have a lot of tax for the town of Fort White?
Wasn't that suggested by you years ago?
No.
You didn't tell me that in the conversation? You didn't say that. You didn't say that, you didn't tell me that we need to have a lot of taxing for it. And that's the same, so what you asking?
If you propose that, it probably gonna be following on sword.
So, you, you were making use of, but you wanted to believe that you're not.
Did I tell you that? If you propose that, you're gonna be following on sword property, I don't think that.
No, you didn't tell me that.
I said, but.
Town of Fort White don't incur an avalanche, y'all are drowning.
We're talking about the annexation.
Well, no, what I'm saying, I'm getting to the point where if you didn't say that, you're denying it, and I was standing there, and I know you said.
What's that got to do with it?
Well, that's what I'm getting to, how can I believe you when you say that you're not gonna turn that into a subdivision? I can't trust you anything you say, really? In anything you say, I cannot trust you.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Really?
Coming from the man that told me.
Told you what?
I would never get nothing approved in town of Fort White, that's why my wife won't tell.
Right.
Did you not say that?
I, I probably, I said to me, I would never vote for you for anything for Fort White, that's right. After you, after you run your mouth on all the social media and stuff that you did, yes, sir, I did. You're thinking, he's thinking.
This is both sides, this is.
Well, it doesn't matter.
This is the same people that said, it's not personal.
Oh, yeah, no.
It's not personal.
No, yeah, yeah, same people. Oh, it is. It's very ridiculous.
Yeah, I agree, so just give us the property, they probably have Fort White, you won't do it anymore.
I mean, I, y'all, y'all, is there a motion, I, is there a motion on the board?
You don't need to be uh-uh, uh-uh about.
You don't know I'm nothing.
But you don't. She's over there kinda uh-uh, uh-uh. It ain't gonna have nothing to do with it.
But you just told me I was silly bragging away.
I'm not listening, I'm just saying. She has no say in it.
I can make a comment, just somebody, you'll hear if I want.
This is my, all right, yes, sir, yes, sir. Let's stop this, please.
You're making comments, you're telling them how to vote.
Let's stop, let's, everyone stop, everyone, everyone, stop. All right, okay? And we understand their position, it's to the council. I think if there's any more discussion amongst the council, you should have it amongst yourselves.
Right.
And then vote to do whatever it is you're gonna do.
No, it just makes them do it, is there a motion on the board?
Okay, I will make a motion that we return the property back to the county.
Do I have a second?
What, is this a partial number, do I need to put the partial number in there?
I, I think you just, I think you just reference, uh, on your agenda, it would be.
With Lisa's land LLC?
And, and the other property.
Partial number zero four zero six three, tag zero one zero, to remove the property from the town of, to pull up.
We got a second.
Second.
Second? We got a second, all right, so, that will be any more discussion? Good? All right, so all in favor of removing the property out of the town of Fort White and giving back to the county, uh, Lisa's LLC, say aye. All opposed, say, say nay. Nay.
Nay.
So, at this point, so, and we can bring it back up. So, I mean, since we had to make a motion tonight, I think that we're gonna do some research, and we can talk about this, and we can bring it back up on the agenda. That's where we, I was going at it with it anyway. I wasn't saying no, we're yet, and I, but I wanna, I do want to do some research. Because I wanna, I wanna be able to know that you're not gonna turn that into a subdivision. I will say that, I don't care about the tax money. I have no, I have.
Well, I do, because I'm the one paying it, at least a little.
You, you're gonna pay the same with the town of Fort White, are you gonna pay for the taxes?
No, 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 no.
So, what I'm saying, I'm not, what I'm saying is, I'm not worried about the tax money.
Well, in that case, Brian, why would, why would y'all charge that alarm? We're gonna pay the same. Why would you charge an avalanche tax if we're gonna pay the same? When you're in the town of Fort White, if you're in town of Fort White, you pay county tax in Fort White.
We won't.
Yeah, so, all right, well, we'll, we'll bring it back up, so, all right, um, I lost the paperwork, I, I.
You have a second.
Two.
We have a second, Miss, Miss, uh.
No, I'm saying, you have a second piece of property that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to make another.
I got it, huh?
Make another motion on number two.
Oh, number two, request, uh, may Colin Megan Jackson for contraction of parcel, so we have, so we need to make a motion, I guess, on that.
Did they ask for the questions, or Rocky's question, or whatever they got? Is there any motion on number three? They, they filled out a letter and signed it.
I don't know.
It's the middle.
I don't know.
No, I'm saying, do you?
I don't know, so I don't know.
She not gonna make a motion for it?
Same, same.
I don't know what they do, I don't know what they did. I know what Rocky and them did, they did for the subdivision, it didn't work out.
This is the one, this property is the one house that was built and sold. That was gonna be part of the subdivision.
So, they wanted us to take that, so you're not gonna make a motion for them?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know what they're talking about.
Bill, are, are they wanting to be moved into the county too?
I'm, I'm representing them also. When I said at the beginning, they bought the house that we built, it's under, renting, is gonna be part of the subdivision. And they wish to have their property be in that town of Fort White also. They, uh, they, they signed a letter, filled out a letter, and turned it all in. Uh, they could be here tonight, he's in the air force, in there, in Jacksonville, six feet old. So, they asked me to represent them tonight, if they would, uh, they would like to have their property taken out of town of Fort White also. So, now.
I will make a motion that we remove, follow them, make them catch you? There was one parcel from the city of Fort White, see them?
Bill made a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? Any second? All right, so, motion dies, table, so, move on. All right, um, number four, approval of site plan, SP twenty-three oh two submitted by Margaret Green, I believe that was recommended from the, from the PZ, that was recommendations from the PZ, I don't know what we're talking about. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, SP twenty-three dash oh one. You have a second on that?
What?
Second.
All in favor of site plan, SP twenty-three dash oh two submitted by Margaret Green, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Approval.
You need to go back and go to three and take the motions to the table.
You should find your own business, don't you? Yeah.
I missed that, didn't I? I do the highlight aside a minute too. So, this was one that, this was.
They, they, Tony, it's just me. It's just me.
It's seventy-four.
I'm fine.
Guys, let's get through this real quick so we can get out of here. All right, approval of site plan, SP twenty, no, 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 yes.
Raise me to it.
So, we're tabling?
Yes.
Y'all opposed?
Correction, make a motion to table site plan, SP twenty-three oh one.
Yep.
A second.
Second, all in favor of tabling the site plan, SP twenty-three, that's our one, say aye. Number five, approval of interlocal agreement with town of Fort White and Columbia County regarding the road maintenance.
Um, in, on your desk or in front of you here, um, I have the one interlocal agreement included in the packet, that was for the maintenance of portions of the county roads, Old Wire, Centerville, Jordan, and Cook Street. And then.
Did we finish number four?
Yeah.
And, um, today, um, uh, Mr. Lindsay Lander has been working on the rest of the interlocal agreements that the county has requested from us. And so, copies are on the table there in front of you, um, but the only one that's on the agenda is for the, uh, road maintenance, because that's the only one I had timed out in the agenda. The rest of them aren't here.
And, and what? I'm sorry, but.
The, um, ones that are covered are the, um, for animal control, uh, the county doing our building permitting and inspection, uh, operation of the community center within the town of Fort White, um, the completion of the water line from Ellisville to the town of Fort White, maintenance of the retention area within the town of Fort White that's owned by the county, uh, and mosquito control.
That's what you're working on? No, I'm done.
No, these are done.
They're all done, okay, they're all very simple. What I would recommend is that the council approve us sending these to the county for their inspection agreement, whatever, and they can approve and we'll approve. Let's go ahead and put them all.
I called it Joel that day, Joel said, send them to him, they need to alter.
Oh, done, ready, okay. We're gonna see him again, though. You're gonna see him again.
Yeah, once they approve it, they'll send you.
Yeah, come back to us when I say. All right, so, I'll make a motion to send interlocal agreements to the county.
No, sir.
Good, all in favor of approval of interlocal agreements in the town of Fort White and Columbia County, and send them to the county, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, could you, all right, R. W. Parkin?
Um, this is, we've discussed this before, this is the right-of-way parking within the town. Um, we tabled it and said we were gonna come back to it and come up with some, uh, requirements. Uh, myself and Mr. Lander are just requesting from the town, uh, the town council to give us some kind of guidance as to what you wanna see in an agreement for right-of-way parking, so we can get started with something to present to you. Just basi- basi- where's your.
Just based, based, what's your concerns?
I thought we had a conversation about this, and we were asking them to get some insurance.
We never decided.
We would, we never, you know, brought that to a load, et cetera, you know, I'm... I don't have a good answer for the right-of-way issue. It's my understanding that there's a lot of businesses here in town that use right-of-way parking, um, and that probably, like anything where you have that type of, of makeup, you have some places where it's no problem at all, and some places where it causes all kinds of problems. Uh, so, if, if we come up with a town, you know, ordinance, et cetera, that regulates right-of-way parking, it's gonna apply, obviously, to the ones that aren't having issues, and the ones that have issues. So, it's not really an easy, uh, 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 thing to decide how you want it written, what do you want in it. Um, I know, like you said, we've discussed having, uh, people who, who have properties that use right-of-way parking take out additional insurance policies. First question with that, could be, all right, that's gonna have to be everybody, so everybody, uh, would, would have to apply for that. And I can tell you, you know, if you wanna think about lawyers dealing with business, I'm a small business, all right? And so, you know, I have to get insurance, and I have property insurance, and, uh, et cetera. Sometimes that can be an issue, um, with getting it, or how they'll insure, or what they'll insure for, how much it's gonna cost them, or all those things. So, we have to, we do have to think about that, as, as we decide what we're gonna do. Uh, Ms. Connie and I had sent out some, basically, questions to our insurance coverage, uh, about, okay, well, you know, we're, how, how are we covered, you know, uh, under the, uh, under the current status that we have? And, and their response, I don't remember what it said it worked for, but, but basically, it was kind of a vague response of, well, you should be careful about how you, you know, regulate all, 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 you know, right-of-way parking, et cetera. The liability is, is, is there, or whatever, they, they were, they were kind of vague. So I, I don't know what that entails. So, I mean, you still have some choices, you can do nothing, as we have been doing, and accept that, that some places are gonna have issues and so on. Um, or you can decide, okay, we're gonna require everyone to get additional insurance, we're not gonna allow right-of-way parking, or we're gonna limit right-of-way parking, or whatever. So, I don't think that we're asking for you to make the decision, obviously, but because it was something that was, was brought to us, we're, we're bringing it back for discussion at all.
Is it something we should put, like, businesses do, and not, I mean, because you've got residents in the same situation? So the residence that's got housing, you've got churches involved here.
Yeah, you got churches, I don't know what you got.
I mean, so how do you regulate?
I, I, well, I think, again, you know, you do, if you go for one, you gotta do a preference.
And then we have the issue that, and I sent Lindsay a picture, the collective has asked if they can do some maintenance work on our right-of-way, because there's a pipe being exposed from the traffic going over and parking there, wearing away the dirt and the rain and everything else, and they're wanting to do work on our right-of-way to cover that pipe up, and perhaps put some material there that won't wash away, et cetera, et cetera. And so, then, do we allow private to do work on town property, and then we're liable if anybody gets hurt, you know?
Well, that's a easement, too, there's utilities and a lot of things in place, so...
There's, uh, you know, you don't know what's buried under there.
Yes, sir. Uh, do I need to take podium, or? Um, so regarding that pipe, um, when I initially bought the property, I had Suwannee River Management go out there, because, um, my property is actually, the town of Fort White streets around the collective were designed in a way so that the water can run straight into that pipe that was utilized back in the past of, of Fort White's original development. That pipe collected all the water runoff from all the roads around there, and shot it out to, uh, same hole that you guys have out in the back. Um, so, Suwannee River Management did notify me back then that I think that the town can apply for, like, a forty-five thousand dollar grant, and that the Suwannee River Management can work with you guys to decide on, um, that water mitigation. Because basically, what Suwannee River Management told me was that right now, all the stormwater that I'm accumulating on my property, that I don't have to accept it. And they told me that I should go ahead and build a two-foot mound around my property where Brian's Avenue is, and not accept that runoff. Now, I didn't think that was a smart idea, so we didn't do that. Um, and I never heard back anything else regarding whether, so my thing wasn't that I wanted to just cover up the pipe, or I thought maybe it'd be a great idea to involve Suwannee River Management, and possibly, they decide, you know, we're gonna start using that again. You can make some kind of curve around that pipe and collect that water, shoot it out to the thing where it used to go, and at some point, somebody stopped using that, but, but the water, it's, the pipe has not been exposed because of traffic. If you go out there, you'll notice that the water, I have videos, it runs straight into that pipe, and because that pipe's no longer open, it just goes right over, and you can clearly see a little creek that's running, um, along my property.
Maybe we can reach out to the Suwannee Water Management, say, if they want to put a grant, get up out of there.
I did, I talked to Leroy Marshall at Suwannee River Water Management District, and yes, they do have a grant to do the work, but it has to be engineered. And so, somebody has to pay for the engineering to be done, to have it designed so that they know what they're gonna be permitting and granting the money for. And so, I gave the number of, um, EDA, Place Swager, to Ribbon, and said that, you know, get with him, y'all work up a plan, get the engineering done, bring it in here, and we'll submit it to Suwannee River Water Management District.
Yeah, so we don't mind submitting it, I mean, if you, if that, I don't know how big of a burden that is right now, but if it's a burden there, we'll, we'll submit it, no doubt.
So is that something that town wants me to go ahead and speak with them?
Well, we're not, I mean, we're not, we're not giving you, it's something that if, if the collective wants to go and pursue, the collective goes and pursues it, you know what I'm saying? We'll help you if, if God can help submit it in or something, but when it...
Do you guys like the idea of maybe using that pipe, that, that drain again?
Whatever Suwannee River water, whatever the, does, we're not engineers, so I don't know what they're gonna design to solve the problem, that's up to the civil engineers, and that's why Suwannee River Water Management District said what they said. Submit the plan, submit the design.
By no means are we giving you the right to go and order something on town of Fort White, you're saying, so, yeah. So, but if you wanna pursue that, it's something you think that would help your business out, and we can get a grant right, or maybe try to write a grant to cover, I mean, we don't mind.
The whole entire road, that road is a priority because of that water ground.
Right.
Um, and you can clearly see how...
We have a lot of streets that have needed to be...
All run down there, yeah.
Yeah, they're bad, so...
Well, then, what do you need your number six?
Uh, just...
What are you looking for?
I, I'm just looking to bring this back to your attention and give you guys, ask you to think about it, to come back at a future meeting, and especially, you know, in my mind, I was thinking businesses, but you're talking about churches and residents and all that, too. So, put it in mind, think about it, what you might want us to do with anything. That, that's all, no, no, no action.
Number seven, appointment of, uh, William. Appointment of Representative Town of Fort, oh, appoint, it says appointment, I thought, I don't know. But I think I deleted it now. So, appointment of William Coon Jr., Representative Town of Fort White, Columbia County, tourist, you can have all that you want up there. I did that, it's come, it's married, done it, now you, you're turned up.
The loan is going through.
It's gonna interfere with everything you got going on, so... So, I, I'll make the motion to appoint William, William Coon Jr., Representative Town of Fort White, all the...
I second, good.
All in favor of appoint William Coon, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The new tourist, don't remember. All right, number eight, Girl Scout troop waiver to sell cookies, so...
They want the waiver of the seventy-five dollars, these ones.
There you go, where's the cookies?
To sell, the cookies at the collective.
I mean, are we really gonna use it, is it really Girl Scouts, is it really?
Yeah.
We don't benefit as a group.
She's here, yes, ma'am.
Is she here? I've got you, I've got, all right, you're here, so it's really, so you're really gonna do it?
Yeah, we just want for the cookie season.
Okay, just for cookie season, so how long's that, how long that last you?
Uh, we get the cookies February ninth, I believe, and it goes to like March nineteenth.
Okay.
And we'll probably just be there like once or twice.
I got, okay. You have a problem for that? I'll make a motion to waive the business license for the Girl Scouts.
Good. Second, good, all in favor of, uh, Girl Scout troop waivers to sell cookies at the collective, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And then, you can sell wherever you want to, you got, you got the business license, so you can, you don't have to sit up there, if you wanna sit there, it's fine, or you can move around.
I know the Girl Scouts has some rules about that, too, so...
Yeah, we appreciate you, so, ma'am. Um, I, number, uh, six now would be citizen comments, so anybody need to make a citizen comment?
Can I?
You just gotta step to the podium, yes, ma'am.
It's a question.
Okay, well, go ahead, what's your name, say your name.
Um, Crazy Wayne Lady Food Truck.
Crazy Wayne Lady Food Truck, okay.
Can I sit at the collective?
Can you stay at the collective?
Can I sit there and sell cookies?
You got a business license for Fort White, that's, that's, that's between you and them.
Okay.
Seven AM to ten PM.
Oh, I didn't stay here till ten. Y'all want to eat, you come and...
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?[1781.64]